Seven nineteen P M. Uh, Madam Court, roll call please. Councilmember Opanama.
Yeah.
Councilmember Eugenia.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burnwood.
Here.
And Mayor Dale is absent for the record. Oh. Now for the pledge of allegiance. Mister Morita, we need to leave this as a pledge of allegiance, please.
Sure. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the right of which stands one nation, in this law, to give us.
Uh, adjustments to this agenda, Mister Morita, are there any adjustments to this agenda?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, there are no adjustments to the agenda.
Uh, Mister Holbrook, are there any actions taken in closed session?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I have no action to report from closed session.
Thank you. So we'll move on to public appearances. C one, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. And at that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place the time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to council in writing. If there's anybody here to speak on items not on the agenda, please step to the podium. Seeing none, we move on to item C two, uh, which is matters appearing on the agenda. And at that time, when the uh, item appears, uh, you can submit your comments then. Uh, so we'll move on to D one, special presentations. Um, American Cancer Society Action Network to represent Cancer Society Representative Melissa Curial. And um, I invite you to come to the podium to make your remarks. Yeah.
Um, hello, everyone. Um, my name is Melissa Curiel. I'm a resident of City of Imperial and also a staff member with American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, Project Vive. So thank you, um, city council for allowing us to present today. Uh, like I mentioned, I'm resident of the City of Imperial and also um, come a minute engaging manager for Project Vive. So um, ACS CAN is a nonprofit, nonpartisan affiliate of the American Cancer Society. We work with community members to advance policy changes at the local, state and federal levels to eliminate cancer as we know it. That includes pursuing policies to protect our communities from harmful tobacco. So let me provide a background about Vive. So Vive stands for Vidas Importantes Vecindarios Elevados. And under our grant, we work in the Riverside, San Bernardino and Imperial County on tobacco-related health disparities among the Hispanic Latino population. Our work includes working on smoke-free policies such as smoke-free outdoors, smoke-free multi-unit housing and tobacco retail licensing. And some of our partners, yeah, we include um, the American Lung Association, the local lead agencies and the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Imperial County. And here today, we have some um, Vive advisory members, uh, which are also volunteers of our project. And their names are Jessica Garcia, Giselle Siva and Vanessa Galván. So what are we doing um, to address the issue of tobacco and cancer in Imperial? We provide education in the communities about the dangers of tobacco and secondhand smoke. And most importantly, we're here to serve as a resource to the community through education and empowerment. We provide community members with resources and help them better understand smoke-free policies to protect themselves and loved ones from involuntary exposure to secondhand smoke.
There is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Any level of exposure to secondhand smoke, whether it be um, cigarette smoke, e-cigarette, aerosol or cannabis smoke, is dangerous and can have long-term health impacts in both smokers and non-smokers. Secondhand smoke contains more than seven thousand chemicals. Hundreds are toxic and about seventy can cause cancer. Lung cancer is a leading cause of cancer deaths among Hispanic and Latino populations in California. And smoking causes eighty to ninety percent of lung cancer cases. Marijuana secondhand smoke is dangerous containing many of the same cancer-causing chemicals as cigarette secondhand smoke. Everyone has the right to breathe smoke-free air. Smoke-free policies are designed to protect the public and all workers from exposure to health hazards caused by exposure to secondhand smoke tobacco. Um, the same should be true for secondhand marijuana smoke. We surveyed about eight, one hundred eighty-eight community members of Imperial um, on their thoughts about smoking and secondhand smoke in outdoor public areas. Eighty-seven percent of them reporting that breathing in another person's smoke was very much a problem. Eighty-six percent of them found that tobacco litter in outdoors areas was very much a problem. Most respondents, sixty-one percent of them, reported never using tobacco. Almost all respondents, eighty-nine percent of them, reported that tobacco or marijuana smoking and vaping is not allowed in their homes. Seventy-seven percent of them, of the respondents, supported a law restricting outdoor secondhand smoke. In October of twenty nineteen and December of twenty twenty-one, the Vive Project and volunteers from Imperial High collected observation data at sixteen public outdoor areas in the City of Imperial, including various parks, bus stops and downtown Imperial. The observation form collected the amount of visible no-smoking signage, the number of people smoking and the amount of tobacco or marijuana waste in the public spaces. The data showed that no-smoke-free signage at any location, one hundred percent of locations had tobacco litter. There was an average of twenty-five pieces of tobacco litter at these locations. This data shows us there is, there is a need for smoke-free outdoor policies.
The American Lung Association in California established local tobacco control grades in the categories that reflect where local action is needed and where the greatest public health benefit can be derived. The bar is set high because tobacco remains the number one preventable cost of death in California and because experience shows that local action has been the cornerstone of the tobacco control movement and public health improvement. The four contro- tobacco control policy grades there are assigned to each, to each city and county are smoke-free outdoors, smoke-free housing, restrict- reducing sales of tobacco products and restrictions of flavored tobacco products. Before COVID and the pandemic, we initially met with Imperial leadership to introduce our project. One of the asks was to find out how the community felt and we have engaged them since. In January two thousand nineteen, we met with city manager and later that week KYMA came out with a news report. Citizen Imperial County received part grades in state of tobacco control, where city staff stated that bettering the health of the locals is a high priority for the city. As stated in this article, we want to do what we can to increase the quality of life and the life expectancy expectancy of our residents within our community. We want to make sure, we want to continue the momentum and goals of creating smoke-free spaces and multi-unit housing.
Hello, everyone. My name is Giselle Silva. I am the Director of Transportation for Imperial Unified School District and I am a single parent of a uh, one daughter. I'm gonna continue. Um, it's what uh, is what the community members of Imperial want and deserve. Comprehensive, smoke-free outdoor areas, including dining, entryways, public events, ATM lines, ticket lines, bus stops, sidewalks and outdoor work sites. Smoke-free multi-unit housing apartments, condos and common areas. In your packets, you will also find a model policy by the Public Health Law Center for smoke-free and tobacco-free areas. Currently, in the City of Imperial, only the affordable housing multi-unit complexes are smoke-free under HUD ordinance. A smoke-free policy is beneficial for both owners and residents by promoting a healthy and clean air environment, especially for young children, people with asthma and chronic lung disease. All Imperial residents deserve to live, work, study and play in smoke-free environments. Uh, by implementing laws and policies to make our communities smoke-free, we can protect residents from the dangers of secondhand smoke, reduce death and diseases associated with secondhand smoke, help um, keep our community beautiful and reduce tobacco litter, model positive behaviors for youth, reduce the number of people who start smoking, encourage people to quit smoking. Smoke-free policies help denormalize smoking behaviors and are particularly effective among youth and young adults who are vulnerable, vulnerable to visual cues and social norms of smoking. It is likely that smoke-free policies for marijuana will have similar effect. So how are smoke-free laws helpful? Adoption of a smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance will protect over twelve percent of our Imperial population, including our most vulnerable who can protect themselves. Smoke-free indoor air policies have proven to be effective to reduce secondhand smoke and decrease smoking. Increase successful cessation and decrease tobacco initiation among adolescents. Approximately one in three multi-unit housing ref- residents are covered by smoke-free uh, building policy. Overall, smoke-free unit, units housing, reduce health risk, keeps the unit clean, free and toxic litter and reduces smoke damages from third-hand smoke. Keeps the apartment complex safer and reduces the fire risk. Good for business, reduce maintenance costs, reduce risk and liability, retain current residents, attractive amenity and insurance discounts. Communities in California are taking measures to protect their residents from the toxins and secondhand smoke exposure. Over sixty municipal uh, municipal, municipal policies in California have enacted smoke-free policies by prohibit smoking in one hundred percent of individual units. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vanessa Mendoza. I am school counselor at Barbara Worth Junior High, a resident of Imperial and a mother of two baby boys. Um, I'm here today to share um, some information on um, why I feel this is important. Um, we uh, know and understand that there is no safe level to secondhand smoke. Uh, and so we know that the most vulnerable are those that live in multi-unit complexes um, and those that share a wall with someone who is a smoker. And so that smoke can travel from anywhere between cracks, windows, ventilation systems, plumbing and even electrical lines. And so the most vulnerable are those that share a home with the, with those nearby. What we see as well is smoking outside of your window or turning on the AC or a fan does not help. Instead, it disseminates and distributes the smoke across the home. And like we said, no level of secondhand smoke is safe. And so who are the most vulnerable is the people that live in those homes and uh, young children. We see that uh, if young children are exposed to secondhand smoke, there is a delay in lung growth, uh, which can cause respiratory disease. We can also see low birth weights, uh, a rise in SIDS, cognitive impairment, behavior problems and asthma. Another consequence of secondhand smoke is what is coined as thirdhand smoke. And so thirdhand smoke is the residual nicotine and chemicals that come off of smoke from tobacco cigarettes. This lingers and sticks to fabrics and the inside of homes. And so we see that those toxics react to the indoor air pollutants that we have and cause cancer-causing uh, compounds. Now, we see that little ones can ingest this, get it on their hands or um, inhale it. And so this causes more risk for a child in the home. So as we mentioned, in June of two thousand twenty-one, the Vive Project and the volunteers from Imperial High School found that at ten different multi-unit buildings, there was only twenty percent of signage that's uh, that at ten different multi-unit buildings, there was only twenty percent of signage that's uh stated no smoking. However, there was forty percent of those units had tobacco litter um on them. The voice in our community is very powerful, and so like a mother in Imperial uh mentioned to us, this month I took a three, my three-month-old son to his first market night event and was shocked at the amount of people who were smoking at the event. That was from Clarissa. Another mother, Araceli, mentioned, I can always smell cigarette smoke when we're around young children present at the playground. As we early mench- er mentioned earlier, seventy-seven percent of residents would support a law restricting outdoor secondhand smoke. Help us lead the way in Imperial Valley and improve the health of Imperial residents. We are asking the council to take a strong action and protect residents of Imperial from secondhand smoke in outdoor public areas and multi-unit housing. We ask the council to get smoke-free outdoor and smoke-free MUH on the agenda as an agenda item to improve the health and life expectancy of our residents. Thank you so much for your time. If you have any questions, Melissa Coriel from the American Cancer Association um is happy to support. They're here to assist. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. That was really informative.
Do you have a question? Do any other cities have these ordinances in effect already?
Uh unfortunately, no cities here in uh Imperial County, but other cities in California they do, and you could find more information I could forward to you through the uh ALA, the Tobacco Long Grades. They have it actually like uh whole California state, and they're divided by counties, and each county has a city and their grade. So I could um make sure that you receive that so you could uh look at it.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Now moving on to item D two, City of Imperial Census Customer Portal. Uh Ms. Gutierrez and Mr. Estrada.
Let me start the presentation. Well, first of, first of all, I'm very happy to introduce the the Census Customer Portal. It has been a long uh effort from a lot of parts, uh our service provider, uh Aquametric Census and City of Imperial. So but finally is available for residents. And this is one of the fe- well, these are the features that benefit the city uh regarding the, while we have it. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of them just for displaying purposes. And these are the benefits of customers. Here, um they're gonna be able to set alarms, um hear reports of consumption, et cetera. And there is the, the URL to access the, the site and also complete the registration. Uh unfortunately, we, we can uh present live the customer portal because there is personal information displayed on the screen. It's like account numbers, addresses, and names. So we decided just to present some um screenshots. And Laura is going to explain us a little bit of this product.
So as you can see on here, this is actually, we went on ahead and used my account. Um, we did underneath where my name is, underneath the logo, that's where your address would populate. So as soon as you log in to the website, this is what you would see. On the left, as you can see, there is a menu bar, and so um this is what we call the dashboard. Under the billing cycle usage, that can show you what my current usage is, and that is actually as of today. Um, the middle is the previous, so it's the previous month, and then last year, same time. So it does give you the ability to see your usage um currently, last year, and then also last month. The next um column under the billing cycle data, it's basically the same information, but it actually has the numbers filled in where you can see the billing cycle. So for the current is from February twenty-sixth to today's date, my usage has been one hundred and eighty-four cubic feet. Um, previous billing cycle, I use seven hundred and thirty-six cubic feet, and then one year ago, I used four hundred and thirty-one cubic feet. There is a big difference and an increase in my usage. Um, I used to live alone last year. This year I have, um, my sister lives with me now. So that's where you can see the big difference in the increase in just having someone in the home. Um, the next one is the billing cycle threshold. That, I have set my alarm at thirty units. So right now, my target, I'm at, I believe it's like show twenty percent. When I get into the yellow range or the red range, the system will immediately send me an alert to let me know I'm already getting close to my uh hundred percent target. All the way to the right, um I had, I had alerts in there. I deactivated them because I was getting a lot of alerts. I was just kinda seeing what does the system do as far as being able to provide us with um usage when no one is in the home. Uh, right above where you see the billing cycle threshold where it shows customer, if you have multiple accounts, you don't have to create multiple users to come into the system. You can actually add in multiple meters associated to your name. Um, the next page, Alex. Here, under the usage uh details, this page allows you to see your twenty-four-hour usage. You can uh break it down to seven-day usage or th- uh thirty days or up to a year. As you can see, we went on ahead and used my Monday usage. The system every hour on the hour actually provides us with the read. So that's the first column that you see with the blue, um, the blue columns there. And right below it, if it were to rain, it would show you what the rain uh precipitation has been. And then right below it, it act- it also provides you with what the temperature outside is every hour on the hour as well. Um, and then there's a little section that is blank right where, below where you see the February date. You can actually put in dates there if you want to see a different chart, whether it's just two days. Um, let's say you're out of town and you wanna see if there's any water consumption that has gone through your meter. This is the one tool that when someone calls to say they didn't use that much water, this is what we're looking at. So if you had a leak and you repaired it, for the most part, see where the two lines on mine are straight up, you would have something consistent, and then all of a sudden it just goes flat. So when customers call us with questions and with, in reference to their usage, this is actually what we look at for them. Um, next page. Uh, under the meter here, again, this is, this is my meter here. Um, it'll tell you what my today's uh usage has been again, what my average monthly is, and then what my, what my alert is set at thirty. To the right where you see the billing cycle, that is what my actual average daily usage is. So today, I was, I think, eleven o'clock this morning. My usage had been one hundred and eighty-four cubic feet. My average daily usage is nine hundred and four cubic feet. So this, this in a, in a nutshell is kind of giving you a big picture of exactly what it is that you were doing with your water. When customers call to say, how come their bill is so high? We don't have an idea of how they use the water, but this is the tool that we are actually using to help them. And then uh right below where the settings, we didn't put more pages in here, but under the settings, under the usage alert, um, you can actually set in a daily, a weekly, or let's say you go on vacation and you want your system to alert you that there's water usage. This will tell you, because I did when we uh got the system, I just kind of played with it and put dates in. It immediately let me know that when I turn the water on, that there was water going through that system. Um, under the alert recipients, that's uh you can set up your uh a text message, so you can get text messages or multiple email addresses if you want multiple people in the home to also get alerts as far as what is happening with your meter. Under user settings, you can change an email address or a phone number. And then under the units, it gives you the ability, if you want your, your usage here to be under in cubic feet or gallons. I kept mine in cubic feet because this is how our meters actually read, and when you see your water bill, it shows it in cubic feet. Um, the rainfall, it'll, you can change the measurement into millimeters, centimeters, or inches. And then the temperature also gives you the ability to change it from Fahrenheit to Celsius. And then just right before we go to the next page, if you see right above, you can, from any of these pages, you can actually pay your bill. It'll take you to the website. Um, and you can also change it from English to Spanish. Next page. And so with that, we encourage um everyone to sign up with the My Imperial app. We have included the Census Customer Portal there, so that way that will allow them to go in and register. Um, once everyone is registered, then they can actually go into the other, uh it'll take them to the, the dashboard. The one important thing to know is you have to know the name, the exact name on the bill, and the exact account number is what we need in order for you to register. And with that, if you have any questions, and I wanna thank Public Services. There, it was their team that actually helped us get all of the endpoints installed out in the field. IT who has, of course, they helped us get this uh program implemented, and so it's been a long team effort.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the?
So that one screen. Oh, if for example, there's nobody in my house, I could go look and see there was water running all day long, for example, when nobody was there.
Would keep a blue line consistent. If you have a leak, it would show a consistent blue line, and as you can see for mine, it's a toilet flush because we've tested it. So exactly those that are that small amount, that is exactly what a toilet flush is in my home.
And, and we also have the ability, we have tablets that we will.
We do have blue tablets if a customer uh in any way feels that there's a leak in their home. We do provide them with tablets that they can put inside of their toilet tank. The water turns blue, so they'll see that the water kind of seeps through into the tank. Sometimes it's a four-dollar fix, which is the toilet flapper. Ninety-nine percent of the times it's, they need to repair, repair the toilet flapper. Um, they don't know it because it's something you don't see, but it sits in the tank, and when it warps, water does seep through it.
That's a great tool.
Yeah, I just moved into a new home. That actually happened to me, and I paid a plumber a lot of money to fix that four-dollar thing, but would you be able to contrast like previous bills to current ones, even if you weren't living there, to see what it looked like before? Uh, to see if they're, how significant that uh leak affected your bill?
Well, if you look on here, even though prior to me moving into my home, I have the history of that meter, so I can go back two years and I can tell you exactly what that meter was doing.
Wow.
But it is, it's the information to the meter is what, what you actually get.
Forward to use it.
Let me know if you have questions.
How do you turn that off?
Okay. Thank you so much for that presentation. Um, moving on to item E, Consent Agenda. All items appearing under Consent Agenda or will be acted upon by the City Council by one motion without discussion. Should any member or person request that item be considered separately, the item will be taken up at a time determined by the mayor. Um, do you have a motion to move the, or to approve the consent agenda?
Some will. Second.
So have a motion by Amparano and a second by uh Councilmember Tucker. Can I uh go for the vote?
Motion carries four zero.
Moving on to action items, F one. Replacement of Wildflower North Retention Basin Block Wall Fence.
Good evening, uh Madam Mayor, pro temp members of the council. Uh, staff has been directed to initiate the replacement of two hundred and ten linear feet of block wall that is structurally unsound. This wall faces east on La Brujerie Avenue, just south of Wall Road. Staff is seeking City Council's approval to replace existing block wall with six-inch privacy chain link uh fence. And you'll see, and staff's recommendation is that uh we're allowed to seek bids for this process. And I'll stand for any questions.
We're not gonna keep it the same if everybody goes block wall, we're gonna go to chain link fence.
Yes, that, well, the cost is significantly less, and we don't have any um residents that directly uh they're directly behind that basin, so it's not a noise-canceling wall. So um we have about a hundred or more yards before we actually hit a residence on the west side. Uh, everything uh residential is on the north side. And uh right now, currently, uh you have the north and south side of that retention basin is currently chain link.
Only have that one?
Yes.
East side.
And the entrance gate as well uh to the driveway is chain link privacy, so we would just be.
Same thing on the west side. It's all chain link.
Correct.
It's conflicting because it's expensive to use a block, but the visible to public, right?
Yeah, but that area is just I know, I know me and Katie drive it all the time. It's just it's bad the way it is right now, but a chain link fence, it wouldn't make any difference um for two hundred and ten feet if it was a thousand feet and we were doing that entire area from wall from from the drain all the way to Wall Road. I think that would be significant. Um, the only thing my concern with that is just like with everything else is, is if we look at the south side of that chain link fence, how the graffiti is on it, and for us to try to go back and clean it up. If we do get more graffiti on that east side of the fence, once we do fix it and replace it with chain length and privacy, wh- how easy is it to remove graffiti off of that?
Uh, it's, it's fairly easy. Um, the, we have a spray currently that we use right now that um will, you know, spray and remove. The, the paint comes right off of it. Um, once that uh privacy chain link slot is damaged by the sun after years and years, then it becomes harder to remove, but in the initial, uh it's not difficult at all.
Okay, your concern. At nine hundred thousand dollar, nine hundred thousand on, what was it, thousand feet?
I wrench?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that was uh one thousand eight hundred feet, and that was uh seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, this is, this is about two hundred and ten thousand, and then the cost, the cost difference is, is significant.
What are you estimating this at?
Um, for two, for, to put block wall there on that stretch, it's, it's uh in the hundred thousand dollar range.
And what are you estimating for chain link?
The estimate is uh below forty, with demo and rebuild.
So lifespan contrast of the block versus a chain link?
Um, well, it all depends on how it's built. Uh, everything that we do now is, you know, commercial grade. Uh, we put, we, we did the one at Savannah Ranch on that uh east wall as well. That's holding up pretty well. That was about two or three years ago. So we'll be doing the same. So it's all, it all depends on how you build it. Um, same with the block walls. Uh, you see, most of it's falling over now. It's because the way it was built. So um whether we put chain link or block wall, uh we'd be building it uh to be sturdier and last, and last a long time.
About a sixty thousand dollar dip?
Yeah, and that's on the, that's on the safe, safe side, yes.
Other see two quotes, one for block, one for chain?
Okay.
Are there any other alternatives? Like you could do a wood fence, or you've seen a lot of them that are like, um.
Well, there, well, there is vinyl, um similar to what they have on uh on Nance at the Quill Meadows. Um, they have that uh, it looks like brick block wall, but it's not. It's vinyl fencing. That with, that over time, just like anything else, will brittle, will brittle and warp. Um, the longer lasting uh option here would be to block wall. Um, the reason I didn't attach good quotes is if we do go out too bit, I don't want that to be a number that we have a target for if somebody's watching this immediately. But I'll, I'll be happy. I have those quotes, and I'd be happy to provide those.
I'd like a contrast with, so a, a contrast of life expect.
I'll make a motion um to include two bids, one for the block wall and one for the vinyl fencing, or not vinyl, but the chain link with the privacy.
Have a second?
Second?
Please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Moving on to F two, um discussion action item for utility building software annual maintenance. Uh, Mr. Estrada, Estrada?
Yes, uh before, um, before uh you is the annual maintenance service from Harris Computer for our utility billing software in the amount of twenty-two, twenty-one thousand eighty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Um, the, in the IT budget, we covered um twenty thousand dollars. Dollar amount will become out of different accounts, and I was, so for any question that you might have?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Moving on to F three, um discussion action item wireless broadband infrastructure project.
Mayor Pro Tem and council members, before you is the um Department of Information Technology. Uh, recommendation for the installation of a new high capacity uh broadband wireless network around the city. And in the amount of seven uh, seven hundred, seven uh. Seven hundred twenty-four thousand ninety uh nine hundred fifty-three dollars. This project covers all different uh, it's covering different sections. Uh, in the executive um document, I provide the description of the technology. But basically this uh. Project consists of three, three sections or three kind of expenditures. One is the all the wireless infrastructure. And the second is the installation of wireless and the dom camera system around the city. And the other one is the the installation of uh demarcation point from IBTA. So I will stop for any question that you may have. I have a presentation before the questions. So I would like to start um explaining that this project is uh has been in the freezer, if you will, for se- uh several months. Probably years. Uh, because, because it's very complicated to find these kind of projects. However, uh with the allocation of ARPA funds. Uh, we prepared this, this proposal or recommendation from, for your consideration. So basically, we want to do is create a wireless infrastructure around the city. And kinda ring topology, which is gonna create redundancy around the the ring. And in if one of those connections goes down, uh the other part of the network keep running. From there, we're gonna create another, another point to multipoint uh network where it's going to provide. Which is gonna, going to provide access to all the cameras and other um devices around the city. Meaning light, light controllers, irrigation controllers, um et cetera. And also this network will be uh provide service to the last uh section of the project, which is the the wifi in the parks. So um at the same time, providing service to the, to the cameras, like I mentioned before. Uh, in the screen, you can see uh how the ring is gonna be uh. Uh, provided. Uh, we're gonna be using uh the towers that we have around the city, the city hall, the wastewater plant, the booster tank. And also some uh la- some lighting poles from, from the parks. Uh, Joshua Tree and the park at Fourteenth Street. Uh, and from there, we're gonna spread the signal and and provide access to different devices like I mentioned, including the. The. Including the, the cameras and the wifi. So from there, this is just to give you an idea how the technology looks like up in the towers, this is the kind of technology that we're gonna be using. Uh, some, somehow we're gonna partner with Cambrium Network, this is the brand that we're gonna be using. And there's a very high capacity um wireless radios. This technology is very similar to install fiber optic. Uh, of course, there's fiber optic running at higher speed now, it's not that available for uh even for. Our provider right now, our provider maximum capacity is ten G. So that's the, the capacity of this, this wireless radio. Of course, we're not planning to go out to the internet ten gigabits per second. But it's gonna provide the background, um I'm sorry, it's gonna provide the backbone to support all the devices that we want to add to this network. Uh, that's how the, how, that's the way that these other antennas that provide access to the cameras looks like. Um, you will see the antenna that receive the signal from the tower and then we can attach from there any, any camera or any other device. Um, that's the way that we're planning to uh implement. This project also includes the installation of wifi in downtown Imperial. Probably from City Hall all the way to by Castillo's Construction. And in the um Eager Park um area, so all that area will be fully uh free wifi.
Around AM PM.
That's what I was gonna say.
So my idea is moving that technology all around the city and having those ten gigabits available um around. Uh, sorry, let me see, can go back. And if you see in the left bottom corner of this screen, that's the typical installation of a wireless radio. With the camera and other devices. Also, if this project moves, move forward, you will see devices like the one in the picture on top of the streetlight arm. So those are radios that provide the high capacity for some sections of the city. And, and that's the presentation that I have. Um, and I will stop for any question that you may have?
Where the, and the funds coming from?
There are ARPA funds, the, the city, the city allocated. Um, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for ARPA funds. We already used around uh one hundred and twenty thousand on cybersecurity infrastructure. And if we use uh this amount uh for this project, uh which is broadband project. We'll have a remaining balance of um. Eighty-one thousand around.
And where did that money come from to begin with?
ARPA funds, American Rescue.
Part of the, part of the four point four uh million that the city received from the American Rescue Plan monies. Um, is allocated from, from the feds, from the US Department of Treasury. Uh, when council adopted your budget uh back for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. You did allocate a certain amount of money to broadband infrastructure and it's with those funds that we would be putting this project into place.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Said Eager Park is one of the points and what were the others to clarify?
Actually, uh the wifi will, will be available in all the city parks. Uh, but we're gonna put in special attention on this park because of the events around this. I mean, market days, um. We as the Department of IT experienced a lot of problems, a lot of trouble when we tried to stream from there, for example, because there is no capacity from service providers. So basically, we are creating our own network to cover our needs, that's pretty much.
Well, so will this take away where, like if our cameras, let's say we do have market days and we have a bunch of people connected to the wifi. Uh, will this resolve it where we can still have wifi and our cameras won't go down? Okay, perfect. Any other questions?
They have questions. Who's doing the work?
We are, we are.
Internal.
Huh?
Internal.
Internal. Yes, uh, there's gonna be a portion of work that is gonna be uh done for a third party uh company, but it's the minimum, uh so.
When, when you say minimum, are we gonna still have to pay prevailing wages and all that good stuff?
I need to confirm that, but just to give you an idea, we're not gonna expend more than fifteen thousand on that particular uh item.
Um, in, in Imperial County, we have uh something that's been, we've been working with since twenty sixteen that I. When I joined the council through ICTC, it's called the Southern Broadband Consortium, I don't know if you've heard of that?
Yes.
They've expended four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and there's no infrastructure. We're gonna have more infrastructure than that, right?
Yes, and the reason why it's, just to put it in perspective, uh talking about fiber optic is, is just expensive. The million that we have with the eighty, the eight hundred thousand that we have is nothing when you're thinking about fiber. Uh, fortunately now, the, the wireless infrastructure, wireless technology got to the point where it's compared with the fiber. So instead of be running fiber all around the city, it's gonna, instead of go by the poles or underground, it's going to go by there.
And and the reason I bring this up because one of the things, one of the notes that was in here is that we were gonna be serving underprivileged areas or underserved areas. Through the SBBC, they are also gonna be doing the same thing, are we gonna have any tie-ins with them? Or are we gonna be a standalone? Or when they do decide to get their infrastructure up and running and they come to us and visit and say, hey, can we use some of your stuff so we could tie into it? Are we gonna allow it or are we gonna charge them for it?
Well, first thing is uh that will be the last part of the project, I if. If happens, because there is a lot of things behind the providing the, the, the end user technology. Uh, definitely the ARPA funds uh specify the providing internet access to underserved or not served communities. Uh, needs to be available with uh certain um specifications, meaning the speed. It's not about just providing the internet access, it's about certain speed. So uh, that would be kinda in consideration once we receive any request. Is, I wanna say like uh, as they present.
Okay, so there is gonna be more money available come this next cycle for broadband connectivity here in Imperial County, just so we know. Um, you said we're gonna have thirty-four new cameras, how many cameras do we have right now?
In good shape, three or four. Although we have thirteen.
We have thirteen cameras.
I just put in perspective, the, those cameras are back on time to Chief Colon. So they're, they're very regular cameras, no high definition, no nothing like that. So these are very good um high-end um cameras. Uh, there are thirty-two optical zoom, they're pretty good cameras. And also, one of the main characteristics of these cameras is they have a very good infrared distance. So it gives us around eight hundred feet from the, from the camera, so in that time, that's, that's critical. So that's the reason why we, we select those cameras, uh high definition. The system that we are proposing is up to, I think it's forty, forty-eight channels. So, and the, the capacity on hard drive is, is more than enough.
So, so being that we're gonna have about roughly eighty thousand dollars left over and each camera is costing us thirty-two hundred dollars each. Why wouldn't we augment the number and spend what we can on the ARPA funds and get more cameras so we can, we're already doing the work, get a couple more? Get them out there, replace what we need to replace, you said, out of, out of what we have right now, we only have four that are good. That puts us at thirty-eight cameras throughout our entire system.
We, we consider that, um but also. As you see in the um, on the documentation that I prepared for, for you. Uh, I'm including a twenty thou- uh twenty percent contingencies. Those uh, that amount is going to be used for different things that are not listed in this project. But the idea, once we are in that point.
We might.
We, we, whatever um leftovers, if you're gonna remain in balance, we apply to either. Add more cameras or uh install more wireless infrastructure. So we have considered that. The remaining eighty-four um thousand, we, eighty-one thousand, we. Either recommend to add another um demarcation point. Or um, or just use for any cybersecurity project that maybe we need.
That works. Um, so I guess that answers two of my questions, what about our existing cameras? Um, being that we're gonna spend almost three quarters of a million dollars on this, and I know that sounds like a lot. But being in, being cyber and all that good stuff, fiber optics, it's not too bad, what is gonna be the life of the system once we get it rolling?
Well, first, let's talk about the wireless infrastructure. I'm anticipating around. Ten, fifteen years on the life of this technology. Uh, same as fiber, fiber is not forever, fiber ha- also has a de- degradation time or end of life, it will. Uh, IBTA at this point is considering that situation because of the time that they have in business of providing us internet access. So um, and that was a question that I uh asked our uh, the provider. And this technology in particular, the one that provide that ten uh gigabits per second, is kinda four years old. So it's a technology that's gonna be there for, for years and of course, nothing is for sure, right? Uh, so, but that's the, that's the estimated life of the products. Of course, what I like about this project is the, is a uh ring configuration. Meaning if we grow to the north or we grow to another east, we can open the ring. And include that part of the ring and expand our network.
You hit, another question that I have here is, because we're right now, we're only going up to Fifteenth Street and right now, when we're doing groundbreaking next week. On uh, on uh the hotel. So we're gonna be expanding that way at Neckel. And I know that we just or, we ordered a cabinet to allow for cameras, correct Jackie, at Neckel? And eighty-six, after they hit it last time, to be able to expand that. Yeah, traffic cameras, so we can expand that. So why wouldn't we expand that area right now all the way to least Neckel to encompass that?
Well, that's something that we can uh take a look. The consideration here is the, the infrastructure that we have there, at this point, I don't recall having a. High street light, like the, the ones allocated on the uh baseball field, for example, they have, where we have the lights, they're high.
Oh, the power, the light poles?
Yes, the light poles, so I don't know what is available there, but there's a possibility to do it.
And then the last one. Um, security. What is the security of this system that we're gonna be putting in, so? And, and so I guess my question goes with, if we're having like uh. Mayor Pro Tem Burnworth was saying that we do market days and our cameras go off or something. Is that system gonna be able to be hacked, get into uh people that, people use it and be afraid to? Hey, I'm gonna have this problem and then us have a liability behind it.
No, unfortunately, uh. As, I, I mean, I'm receiving every day notifications from different agencies that be prepared, we're ready. I mean, it's hard to say hundred percent. Uh, what I like about this technology is going, is the, allow us to, to configure isolated networks. So the wifi network is not gonna see at any point any other technology or any other deployment, for example, the cameras. And.
If you standalone.
Yeah, yeah, different ne- networks, we got in cybersecurity and stuff like that. There is two point of views here, uh if we, if we provide, uh, let's say free, free wifi. Would you say free is me, that means that you're gonna be filtering the content, are you gonna be allow inappropriate content or? There is the, the problem with cybersecurity is that the end user, most of the time. Back in, when I was younger, twenty years ago, hackers, we, uh, the idea of hacking was to hack my firewall. Hack my router or whatever technology is there, now is how I can hack the end user. That, so, uh, it's complicated to give you an answer because it's a lot of things going on there. But from the IT department, I can tell you that we got, take all the precautions to, to protect the network.
The, the last question on, on security is, will we have a sta- the city have a standalone system? Aside from the free, all the other stuff, so nobody can see our stuff, nobody can get into what it works.
Oh, no, the, for, from the beginning, there is at any point, uh, there is no attachments between each other. Even right now, all the wifi that we have, right now, we have a network back to the times of Chief Colon. Uh, neither these wifi devices, they don't, are part of our network, there's just another entity there.
Standalone.
Don't see our main network, doesn't have access via wifi. I don't know if in the future, because some requirement um force us to do it, but as right now, there is no wireless access to our network. Thank you.
I have one, uh, one more question for you, so is there any warranty on these camera items or any of the wireless?
They are, yes, uh, both have um five years warranty. Five years warranty.
And any service plans that come with them as well, or is that gonna be done by you, our staff?
No, uh, no, they're gonna help us with the, all the implementation, the, the brand Cambrium Network is gonna work together with us, actually, they already started. They prepared for us a analysis of all the, the towers, points, et cetera. So we have already a plan how to uh implement this and we're gonna be working with, with them. Uh, one of the pieces of technology that I really like is that everything is managed via the cloud. So we're gonna be able to access our configurations and be uh able to see traffic, et cetera, via the cloud, so.
Alright, so then this makes it where everybody, if they wanna go to the park, will have access to free wifi, correct?
Yes, of course, will be the disclaimer, like when you go to any, any mall, you will see that I'm going to get access to whatever wifi. It's gonna be a disclaimer and then allow you to go out. What we typically call uh the splash page. What we typically call uh the splash page.
Or has another.
One more. Did we seek any other?
I'm sorry?
Did we go to seek any others?
Oh, no, absolutely. Uh I start uh asking for numbers for uh for the existing uh brand that we use. Uh unfortunately, they don't provide the solution as this other vendor. There is another one or two companies, you want me to tell you the names or no? So another another um brands, but unfortunately, they don't have the solution package as this one, is that that's what I really like. You need to also consider that our department of of department of technology is just plus me, three. So uh it's gonna be a a challenge to to uh take this project, but I mean.
We have faith in you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Is there, so you do need help, is there, you know, you said you put a contingency in there, so guys, do you need more, you know, assistance from outside, can you get it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, we're gonna be working with different consultants, uh not necessarily about the tenants, probably about the light poles, uh et cetera. Uh so, yeah, we're taking those considerations. And that is the reason why we also recommended by C Manor's office to put a twenty percent there. You can, it it looks a lot, but again, whatever money is is not used it, we're gonna put it back to the project.
Make a motion.
Second.
I wanna make a comment. I'd like all your answers, you fixed up Robert.
I think uh, I think uh. Not lying. I think I already, at the beginning, it was a little complicated, but I really, I really like what I do. So um I think this project is gonna be really nice for the for the city. Not only from the IT department, but also for the services that this technology can provide to to another departments. Uh parks, public services, community development, police. So that's what I like about this particular project.
I appreciate the accessibility for students if they wanna do work after school or something. Yeah, I imagine a lot of kids like lounging around watching TikTok videos in the park though. Uh my only suggestion is you should put in like an intercom component, so that when kids are graffitiing, he'd be like, I see you. We're gonna go Big Brother, we should like really go Big Brother.
Hello, have you seen Tony?
Just have Tony sit there for hours a day.
I will wait on Amber's recommendation to send me some products or something that we can integrate. As long as they they have a internet connection, what we call Ethernet port, we can put it up, so.
It is possible.
This is what we call the Internet of Things, right, IOT? So anything can we?
Twenty percent.
Yeah. And and also, we're gonna be uh reporting as we move forward with the project. I'm, I really went to report about the, of course, the the progress, but also about how we're gonna, how how we are using the funds on this in the project.
Do I have a motion by Councilmember Aparano and a second by Councilmember uh Eugenio, please vote?
Motion carries four zero.
Moving on to item F four, SR eighty-six Improvement Project Vision Blueprint, Ms. Brown.
Yes, Madam, Madam Protem Burnworth and members of the council. Um I am happy to uh bring before you a very long arduous process that has gone through a lot of public outreach, community stakeholder meetings, staff input. Um we have our consultants with CR and Associates, Jonathan Sanchez before you. Uh we also have Jenny and Ross joining via Zoom as well to answer these questions. Um we have gone through uh our goals and strategies and we are now at the point of where we will propose what seems to be the preferred concept to you. Um there's a few uh recommendations in that. Um I will, I will let our consultants bring you to how we got here today and exactly what this means in moving forward.
Okay, Alexis, um good evening, members of of the City Council. Again, my name is Jonathan Sanchez and I'm a transportation engineer with CR Associates. Myself along with uh my colleagues Jenny An and Ross Duñez who are joining us virtually. We are uh the consultant, working with the city um on this great project, SR eighty-six uh Vision Blueprint. I'm sure uh by now, uh many of you are familiar uh with the project. We originally presented uh before you this uh this project back in September. When I say that was the first uh City Council hearing where uh we brought this in front of you. So since then, um like Alexis mentioned, and there's been a a lot of uh uh effort uh put to uh put out uh for in terms of outreach, uh workshops. Um of course, I know many of you um are have been part of the stakeholder uh meetings. So I wanna say that for ninety-five percent of you, I recognize a lot of faces. Um this project is n- not new, but for the benefit of the uh for of those who may not be familiar with the project. Uh the first couple of slides uh in the presentation, excuse me, in the presentation will um give uh a general summary, I'll I'll try to go through them swiftly. Um uh but uh that's that's the first couple of uh of slides are that. Uh towards the middle and end of the presentation, I'll be going into uh the the meat. Uh which is, like Alexis said, that the the preferred alternative that we wanna, you know, bring and then present to you. Uh and I'll go into details, so enough of that, I'll I'll get started. So just a a general overview, again, the SR eighty-six Vision Blueprint um has uh five components, um a a major one, um is out is that of outreach, like I was mentioning earlier. Of course, uh mobility analysis is a is a big one. Um and eventually, you know, it's gonna evolve into a corridor plan. The the project will also include design guidelines and development standards. Uh at this point, uh we are basically in the first three-ish or two and a half bullet points, basically. Uh as we, of course, uh progress through the life of the project, we'll um be working on on determining what those design guidelines will be and the development standards as we move forward. Um this is uh just a general uh and overview of the life of of the project and where are we so far. Um the first three blocks, of course, uh you know, uh to the to the left are had to do with, you know, research, existing conditions analysis, um the and the alternatives uh that we uh considered and and presented at a different community and stakeholders uh meetings. Uh of course, at all all these meetings, uh we, you know, took staff input. Um uh stakeholders input, residents input via uh in-person conversations or or surveys. So we we had, we heard you, uh we heard the residents and we're and after this past six, eight months of of work. Uh we are now, we landing at what you see, it's the preferred alternative and mobility analysis. Uh later on, we'll, like I said earlier, we'll go into implementation strategies and finally into a draft and final um document of what the SR eighty-six Vision blue blueprint will will be. Um again, if if you forgot uh by now, I wanna give you a refresher of what those goals and and strategies are. Uh what's the 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 heart and soul of the project. Uh we wanna uh revamp and revitalize the SR eighty-six corridor, which historically has been a state route on on by Caltrans, now that the city has control o- all over it. Uh we wanna make it, uh we wanna create walkable areas, we wanna make it a destination. We just don't know, we no longer want people to just speed through um the corridor. Uh we wanna make it uh, you know, safe, we wanna slow people down so that they can uh en- enjoy and stop and and look at the city and and really just make it a a destination, like I said. Uh a lot of, a lot of this will be achieved um via um improvements, uh it it mainly transportation-related improvements. Uh we're focusing a lot of our our um transportation features along the corridor to make it more inviting for all modes of transportation. We wanna include pedestrians, bicycles, and not only vehicular flow. Uh and we, like I said, safety is paramount as part of this uh project. Uh I wanna take a quick uh uh trip down memory lane. I know a lot of you uh were uh remember or were part of the downtown master plan uh that was uh prepared a few years ago. Uh so this this project, the SR eighty-six Vision Blueprint, is not starting from scratch. We are taking um the downtown master plan, a lot of the concepts, uh we're basing a lot of our design from this, there's a lot of good stuff in this document, it it it's a really good document. So uh not only from a transportation standpoint, but pretty much ever anything from urban design to land use, uh and also the streetscape palette. Uh like you can see architectural character, the vegetation, streetscape, all of that is uh we're working with that. We're not scratching any of that, so a lot of that will remain. And and now that uh brings me to uh, I guess, a little bit of the focus on the transportation. Um again, uh I'm a transportation engineer, so of course, because uh transportation is such a a big component of the SR eighty-six uh project, not not the only one, but a major one. I will be uh in the next couple of slides, I will start focusing a little bit uh more than anything else uh on transportation. So this slide shows um basically the the pedestrian toolbox. Uh a lot of these uh features, transportation features, uh are focused to pedestrian facilities. Um you you see some some um facilities such as a pedestrian hybrid beacon or commonly known as hog that that is the one, the picture in the center that looks kinda like a traffic signal. Uh that basically allows uh for controlled uh crossing of pedestrians, uh which makes it, you know, safer, provides more connectivity. Uh we also see some RFB, uh or rapid, a rectangular rapid flashing beacons on the left. Some leading pedestrian intervals, um we also see some continental crosswalks. So a a lot of these um strategies uh will be seen uh or you'll be seeing them as part of the concept and eventually you'll be seeing them out there. Uh not all of them, but this is just to show you what we're working with and and will be again, as part of the concept, will be will be um implementing them. And and they will be eventually included as as part of the uh final concept. This is uh now the the bicycle toolbox. Uh we see some uh class four bicycle tracks, uh some um bicycle parking. Uh bike boxes, pro- protected intersections, bicycle signals. Again, in the same fashion as uh as the pedestrian toolbox. Uh we, you you'll see uh many of these um features implemented as part of the of the plan. Not all of them, but this is this is just to get you an idea of what of what is included in the and and as far as options go in terms of bicycle mobility. Um finally, we'll 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 also uh not w- we can't forget about vehicular flow, of course, uh you know, we we're gonna drive, people uh continue driving. Uh but what we are going to try to do is to uh try to slow down traffic. Uh for in in order to do that, uh you see some um features such as a a roundabout. Um we'll also, we also see some uh transportation mobility hubs, which is uh what you see in the middle, that's not necessarily uh gearing towards uh vehicular travel, but this light is more of showing just uh general transportation. Uh you also uh sees uh on the left, um a feature for a a bus-only signal. And also some potential for uh the locations where we are uh planning on on keeping, I'll go into details on keeping traffic signals, uh we can also uh do some uh traffic signal coordination uh among them to improve vehicular flow while keeping safe speeds, uh or slow uh slower speeds and in in improving safety. Uh next co- uh next few slides, I'm gonna go over the different scenarios. I'll try to be brief just because there's quite a few of them and I wanna concentrate on the on what we uh wanna bring before you, which is a preferred um uh al- alternative. So this uh first, I'm sure you've all seen it, uh this is proposes uh signals along all the intersections um along SR eighty-six. Um I'm sorry, be- before I I go uh for further into detail, we've, for simplicity uh sake and and for planning purposes, we divided the corridor into three separate areas. Um we ca- called it the the North End, uh which spans from Ralph down to Fifteenth, uh between Fifteenth and uh Imperial, basically just a little south of Second Street. Uh that's our downtown corridor, anything south of that, all the way to Thre- uh Threshold, uh we're calling it the the South End. Uh again, this uh scenario uh that we evaluated includes all signals and also a proposed uh road closure uh or access from Imperial onto SR eighty-six. Um the next one, um this is kinda like a a hybrid which keeps uh traffic signals on the South End. Um has uh roundabouts in the downtown area and then um has traffic signals on the North End. Uh this uh scenario also proposes a road closure from Imperial or access from Imperial onto SR eighty-six. Um spoiler alert, that's basically the same uh proposal for all the different scenarios. Um that that, we just found that um access or closing access from Imperial onto SR eighty-six will just be uh for the benefit of of vehicular flow and also would improve improve safety. Um a- another option that we considered uh is um similar, you know, having some roundabouts, some uh traffic signals, uh but in the specifically in the downtown area, uh in the intersections that are currently side-street stop-controlled, such as uh Fourth, Sixth, uh Tenth, Twelfth, et cetera. Uh those uh currently side-street stop-controlled intersections, we're proposing uh on this scenario to make him uh ride in, ride out. Uh again, this improves uh the vehicular flow uh and improves safety as you don't have as as many T-bone uh collisions. Um this uh other uh uh alternative that we that we've evaluated, we call it the the cityway. Uh the city gateway roundabouts, which uh keeps traffic signals in the downtown area and and basically um has roundabouts as you are, they act as gateways, uh that's why I called it that. And that the roundabouts would be uh located at uh at Ayton Road and the uh on the South End and on the North End, it would be uh located on uh Neckel Road. Uh again, as you're entering uh the city of of Imperial, um heading northbound or southbound. Before I get to uh the 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 preferred alternative, we also evaluated uh uh an alternative that considered roundabouts everywhere except at the far ends uh at at the far north or south ends of of Threshold and uh Wall. Uh everything else would uh was evaluated as a roundabout. Finally, uh we land on the preferred concept, which uh marries a lot of uh of the best uh features of each of the six uh scenarios or alternatives that we evaluated. Um basically, the what the preferred concept has, it keeps uh the existing and proposes to install uh traffic signals on the, it keeps the existing, sorry, existing traffic signal at uh Ayton and SR eighty-six, and it proposes to install traffic signals um at the intersections of SR eighty-six and Claypool, Wall, um and uh Threshold Road. Uh it proposes to uh install a roundabout at Second, um at Barioni and at Fifteenth, uh making the currently side-street stop controls between Fifteenth and Second Street. uh making the currently side street stop controls between Fifteenth and Second Street uh right in, right out uh intersections. And anything and ba- basically, north of Fifteenth Street at Neckle and at Ralph, uh we would have traffic signals. Uh this uh preferred concept also uh considers a right in, right out um intersection at Belfort, uh which is meant to eventually, you know, punch through to at at SR eighty six and have that uh right in, right out control. And again, as I uh mentioned earlier, this uh preferred concept also uh proposes to close uh access from Imperial Avenue onto SR eighty six. Uh this slide uh shows uh what at the cross section uh on the south end. Uh again, the south end spans from Threshold to Second Street. Um this uh south end cross section, um as as you can see, on on the far uh uh left, you can see what uh an access road, which is what it currently is, a preble road. Then it has also some some landscaping. It proposes to install a a two-way cycle track with a separate pedestrian way. Um we're keeping um four four lanes of travel to to in each direction uh for vehicular flow. Then um as we're heading on the east side of of the roadway, uh we're proposing a multi-use path on the on the eastern end. Moving on to the downtown uh area, uh actually, for the downtown area, uh we uh are proposing two uh two options, basically, one will be interim and then and then we'll have a final uh version um of it. The interim version uh also has a lot of this of the features uh that I just uh described for the south end. Uh from left to right, uh we see a a two-way cycle track. Uh we also see uh landscape features. We are keeping uh the four lanes for vehicular flow, two lanes in each direction. Um uh some landscaping and what you see, uh the access road on the right is what currently is J Street uh and along with a buffered uh bicycle uh lane. For the final version uh of it, uh it it's pretty much keeping the same features as the interim with the uh the 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 difference would be uh J Street going away and making a way for uh some landscape and for a a two-way uh cycle track on the eastern end. And of course, there would also be um the sidewalks available for pedestrians. Finally, uh we land on the north end um of of the corridor. Uh again, uh we we are keeping um the same features uh in in light of the of of the heart and soul of what the project is. We're we're trying to attract people, make it a destination, make it a multimodal uh corridor. And that's why uh we are trying to keep um features and facilities for all modes of transportation. We have a also a two-way cycle track, a separated pedestrian way on on the left side. We we made an emphasis to keep continuity on the left side of the cross section, but it would be the west side of the corridor. Uh just because a a lot of the uh of the businesses and a lot of the the plans for for the future uh of the city are mostly concentrated on the west side. So um that's why you see uh continuous facilities um on the on the left side or on the west side of the corridor, depending on how you wanna see it. Again, we also have uh four uh lanes for vehicular travel. We are, the prefer uh plan is not proposing any ru- road diets. We're keeping the same configuration that for, you know, in terms of travel lanes as as it is existing. So we're really trying to um make the most and really accommodate uh all all of these facilities within within the space that's available uh SR eighty six, which is something that is really great as part of the project. Uh I hardly have the opportunity to work on on projects that have this much space uh to work with. A lot of times, you know, we we end up having to do road diets, which it is not uh always the best or it's at least it's not always received uh from the community in the best fashion. So I think this this is a great project with a great opportunity uh to provide all these uh facilities for all modes of transportation. Um finally, just to wrap up the presentation, um this is just the the phases of the project. Uh phase one um is the the last six to eight months of of work for this project. Like I said, uh stakeholder uh workshops, outreach, all that good stuff took place in phase one. We're currently in phase two, which is the development of the preferred concept, uh which is uh what I what we're bringing uh before you. Um later on, uh for phase three and wrap up of of the SR eighty six uh vision blueprint project would be to draft the actual uh document and finalize it again. Um that'll require a lot of uh stakeholder working groups or uh and will be back again to uh here before you to present it uh to you for for approval. And with that, that's a wrap for my presentation. I'll hear for any questions. Uh I'll do my best to answer um general questions, but uh I think uh my colleagues also have uh the ability to speak uh and hear. So yeah, with that, I'm here.
If I if I can, Alex, uh could I ask the presentation to come back up and and be brought up to the preferred concept slide? Um mayor and council, or uh mayor, pro tem and council, I know that there's there's a litany of questions probably waiting to come out of y'all. So um just wanted to kind of touch base on some of the thought uh behind the preferred concept. As you know, a couple of you were part of what the stakeholder working group. Um really, what this is looking at is dividing up uh the land use throughout eighty six. So and I just say that to kind of give some context to why there's signal lights in one area versus pedestrian control measures in others. Um really deciding as we grow as a city on the southern end that that really be the commercial economic development areas as well as to the north, um north of Neckle, as you know, is uh with our our Hotel North Point development coming in. Um and then concentrating the larger infrastructure improvements and changes into into the downtown or townsite area. Um so with that, I will ask if Jenny or Ross can unmute yourselves and and leave it to you for any questions.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer uh any questions. I think my video is on as still, my video is not able to start. Uh but I think you advanced to slide fifteen, I believe.
And we can hear you loud and clear, Jenny.
Oh, great. Wonderful. Happy to happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I got I got a few questions. When I say a few, there's only like twelve. Um one of the slides on there, uh you said fixed drainage and flooding. It was one of the first slides that that really doesn't matter, just said fixed drainage and flooding on there. Um the last time we spoke about this, uh the cost to fix the proposed drain was fifty million dollars. Has the pencil been sharpened any better? Because I went back and talked to our drainage department and looked at different people and talked about what was the conversation we had. And fifty million dollars still way off. So that's question number one. Um and 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 I know that that the comic that was brought up was, well, you know, we're we're gonna tear this out and we're gonna put eight-inch pipe and we're gonna connect all these and we're gonna put five lines. Do you guys know it don't rain here? So what we have right now is sufficient. And whether you put four or five eight-inch lines in there, really, it's not gonna matter. All it's gonna be is a home for a cat. So I I think the drawing board needs to be a little bit better for the drainage and flooding. We have an existing drain there that works decent enough when it rains and moves down to the central drain on the south end of the valley, uh the south end of the city. So why not tie into what we have already? Make those culverts, tie those in, move the water. We're running thirty-six inch pipes through there. Sometimes we're do- running doubles. You can easily flow oh fifty, sixty CFS through there when it rains. When it don't rain, we don't need it. But when it, uh to me, that's that's one of my big hangups with this. I love the project, okay? Don't get me wrong, it's just, if we're gonna burn fifty million dollars, I'm gonna say no. Because we don't have that flooding problem like you would think. There are certain areas of the town that does flood that does not connect to this. So that's number one. Number two, the roundabouts are awesome because they st- they slow down traffic. And and they're great, they work. My concern with that is, and and I know we're gonna deep divert some of that traffic off to other areas, but for the ones that do have to go through there, how friendly are they to multi-axle vehicles?
So I'll answer your roundabout question for um the drainage uh question, which I knew was gonna come up because it is a a big deal. Uh I'll defer that question to Ross Wagnes, who's the civil engineer on the project. Um but I'll I'll answer your roundabout. So as far as um how friendly roundabouts are for multi-axle uh vehicles, the answer is they're, they can be, they're as friendly as we want them to be. And we'll definitely design them um to be as friendly uh as possible.
Okay, I I mean, I'm worried more about our local businesses making sure that they can get their deliveries coming in on a on a semi or something like that. So just to make sure that they 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 still have access for that, I think is gonna be a big one for me.
Yeah, absolutely, and there there are uh uh design considerations uh when it comes to, you know, the the engineering uh details that speak to uh design of roundabouts for consideration of of big vehicles. So that would not be an issue.
And the reason this is a concern to me is uh Caltrans is trying to implement roundabouts on the intersection of eighty, Highway eighty and Forester Road. Little do they know they get a lot of farm implements going through there that will not fit. And when the argument comes, they're like, yes, they will, it's like, no, they won't. When you got these big thrashers going through there, that's the only thing they're gonna do to the roundabout is thrash it. Because it's not gonna fit. So I'm not expecting that major big farm implement coming through the center of town. But I'm looking more making sure our businesses can get their deliveries, so. I just wanna make sure that we have that oversight and and vision of what we're looking at.
Yeah, absolutely, and and when I uh when you see, you know, roundabouts, when I mention roundabouts uh at this point, uh we're mentioning that mentioning them um as a at a conceptual level. Uh we have not yet determined, you know, the geometry of said roundabouts. So but when we do, when we're at that stage, uh we'll uh and if you remember back at the at the beginning of the presentation, uh a a part of the of the vision blueprint of of or or this project will be to include uh design standards and design considerations. So all of that uh will be included um as part of the project. But yes, I I hear you, and that is something that we do keep in mind.
Right, thank you. Uh one of the other questions I have, and and I it came up in the presentation, and it's still on there. Uh you're gonna keep some of the lanes, the other one's gonna move, is that correct?
Are you talking about?
The roads?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on the on the right-hand side of this screen, there's a little note that says keep existing or following. What's happening um part of this is is uh an element of feasibility, right? When we say we're keeping the lanes, we're keeping them physically in the same place. That doesn't mean that they'll be the same uh condition of lanes. Uh they will obviously need to be uh treated appropriately. Um but there there's really no sense in moving, what I like to say is kind of like completely blowing up a roadway to put a completely different configuration if we can use some of what's out there. And that's what we've tried to leverage um from the feasibility standpoint is to use uh as much of what is out there in terms of where it's located um and and then, you know, reconfigure the remaining amount. Um so with that, I'll actually dive into a little bit of the drainage conversation, and I'll I'll let Ross chime in here as well.
Awesome.
Um with respect to the drainage, uh the key part of this is balancing. Just as we're coming into the roadway and and balancing the modes, we also need to consider um drainage. And then obviously with cost, uh that's that's an aside that that Ross can speak to. Um but we recognize that in order to generate um some of these facilities like that you're seeing on the screen, the multi-use pedestrian ways, the cycle tracks, in order to use that space, we have to convert some of each drainage components. And we still have to uh meet design for certain levels of flooding um as well as I A D standards. And and we know that from, you know, kind of a I A D process. There there's just certain parameters that we need to meet. Uh so we haven't sharpened our pencils, but I'll let Ross chime in here um and give some more information as well.
Sure, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, so thank you, council member, for your questions. Um I'd love to maybe speak offline with the drainage folks that you spoke with and understand some of their thoughts and considerations, if that's possible. Uh but it really comes down to, um as you pointed out, how much water is there realistically going to be along the corridor? And then what do we do with it when it does rain? Uh and so that's one of the interesting aspects of working along this corridor. As you're right, it doesn't rain very often, but when it does, it it comes in buckets, right? And so the sizing that we've done to date is based on the existing capacity of the roadside dishes. And assuming that that volume of water needs to be contained and moved. And as Jenny mentioned, the vast majority, if not all of those roadside dishes will be converted to pedestrian or mobility or green space. And that capacity is going to need to go underground. And then every time you go underground, that's when the price starts to increase. So we are absolutely looking at ways to mitigate those costs, to find values nearing ways to achieve the flood control and conveyance that we need to achieve to keep the roads safe for all users during those storm events. Um but there's a lot of flexibility, as Jenny mentioned, in how much water we move. And if the city wants to engage with um calculations that would differ from county or Caltrans standards, then we can absolutely talk along those lines and come up with what may be a more realistic approach. Uh or we can follow the book and and really control the water that we would uh be prescribed to. So there's a lot of flexibility that we can engage with as we move forward. And those conversations are are really now the next step that we need to take together as the drainage design evolves. And that will really influence the cost and identify where we can identify cost savings.
I would also highlight, you know, just to keep in mind that this is in the conceptual planning stages. Um and so these dollars that would potentially be project dollars or dollars that we are going to have to go out um and potentially secure through grant funding or um grant funding sources that do not come from um, you know, the city's general fund or the city's coffers or tax dollars and anything like that. Um this is a very significant roadway project that will have um significant costs. But, you know, at the at the same time, it's important that we uh sort of future-proof the plan, and that's a key component of this. We certainly wouldn't want to leave drainage issues out in the roadway today, even in the planning stages, that we know are going to become a larger problem in the future.
Thank you.
All right, I have some questions. First of all, how were the roundabouts responded to in the community outreach?
Yeah, that's a really great question.
Um if we go back one slide, I believe to slide seventeen, it's got the preferred concept. I was actually very surprised that um the roundabouts were uh received very positively. Um you know, we are You know, we are, we do a lot of community engagement and outreach and sometimes the conversations vary. But I think one of the key things that we heard was about downtown being a destination, Imperial being a place. And in order to achieve that goal, folks really wanted to have calmed vehicular flow and not the stopping, starting. So when when we compared, you know, some of the benefits and trade-offs with respect to what it might look like if we had a a signal, a series of signals in downtown, folks responded very positively to the roundabouts. They felt that it would achieve the goals better than traditional signals.
I'm a big fan of the roundabout. Seven seems overly ambitious. I don't know about seven roundabouts, but I would like to see that concentration of slow traffic in the center of town. I just wouldn't wanna repeat the same mistake with, I feel like, the forty-five mile speed limit. I feel like it stretches too long. So I would just be conscientious of that and and the distance where those roundabouts are actually needed. What else to do? Oh, another, one more question I had, this is for a for a resident whose backyard abuts the eighty-six and they were concerned about the distance between the bike path and the backyards that that about the eighty-six. Is there going to be a separation or will it just be like a, will they go right up to their fence line?
So the act of transportation in the in the conceptual, there would be a buffer. If they're thinking that perhaps, for example, the the existing right-of-way for the city or alley, if you will, in some of the areas, that that would be in turn the pedestrian paths, that's that's not the case, it would move further. You know, depending on what side of eighty-six they're on, we would be undergrounding those culverts or those drainage ditches. So there would be, there would be a significant buffer where we could get emergency access in that area.
Yeah, that was a concern because people have those alleys, they use them, they appreciate them and so, thank you. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, if I don't have any, we don't have any other questions, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion by Councilmember Eugenio and a second by Councilmember Tucker, please vote. Motion passes four zero. I, with that, I adjourn the city council meeting until the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. Thank you.